Welcome, everyone, to the July 25th Eugene City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here and at home. And we're continuing tonight our first, we have three items. And the first one is a city doing our City Hall Discussion. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we may want to introduce, Mark Gisner has a new employee that he would like to just briefly introduce to the council.
Yes. Mark, please bring up your new employee and introduce them to the community and to us.
Excellent. Since we postponed my annual report, I asked John for one minute and five seconds tops, so that I can introduce our new Community Engagement and Translation Specialist for the Police Auditor's Office. This is Beatrice Hernandez, a recent graduate of University of Oregon, and works at Central Latino Americano as an Immigration, Education, and Outreach Specialist. So I'm thrilled to have her as part of our team and part of the city team.
Great.
Thanks, Mark.
Welcome aboard. I'm delighted to have you here. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for that. The manager? Now, we'll go back to the, oh, I should say about the City Hall Discussion, you have a couple of motions in front of you that I think you were prepared to see here. Okay, City Manager?
Thanks, Mayor. And just a quick prelude, and then we'll turn it over to you for discussion. You might remember, last time we met about this topic, you asked us to bring back a couple of motions, and so what you have before you is what we think captured your intent of your motions. And, of course, we're here to be able to answer questions or engage in any conversation you would like us to be a part of, so.
Thank you. Well, I'm just going to start out and ask Council President and Counselor Evans to put motion one out there.
Happy to do so, Mayor. I move to direct the City Manager to investigate options for value engineering and possible redesign of the current City Hall Phase One in order to be ready to rebid the project in February or March 2017, but not later than November 15th, 2016.
Moved and?
Second.
Second, thank you. Okay, I have Counselor Brown, Counselor Poling, and Counselor Clark.
Well, I just have, I support this, but I just have a question. I think the language is slightly awkward. I think the intent is that the investigation of options and possible redesign will be complete by November 15th.
Right.
That's what it means, okay. And that's the same date that the proposed City-County Task Force will have their evaluation done also.
And if it clears it up at all after 2017 comma, we could insert, and return to council, not later than November 15th. The intent is to return to you for, to make a decision or not with that information. So if it clears it up, we can just say, "return to council, not later than 15th."
That does clear it. At least in my mind.
Are you asking for a friendly?
I'm okay with that amendment, yeah.
And second, okay?
Second, I didn't second.
No, it's Chris. He's okay.
It's Chris, yeah.
Okay. And the only other comment I would make, for the sake of the public, is this just leaves the option open, right? It doesn't mean we're going to have made a decision to rebid. It simply gives us the ability to do that. Counselor Poling?
So is this possible redesign, value engineering, possible redesign of the current City Hall Phase One, is that to be considered on the current City Hall properties?
Yeah, so motion one is just that, to take a look at a Phase One on the current City Hall property, relook that, and then if council chooses to move that out for a bid, then be able to do that. Motion two is, when you get to motion two, really is an evaluation of moving City Hall, excuse me, on to the Butterfly Lot, for example, or wraparound as part of the courthouse project.
Okay. I guess I want to hear from the rest of my fellow counselors before I decide on this, but had, we had the information from the farmer's market that we received late last week, when we voted on the City Hall complex issue the last time, I would have voted along with Counselors Alenka. It's my understanding now they're looking at wanting the entire Butterfly Lot. In all the discussions that I was aware of, it was a total of 15,000 square feet. So that kind of changes the whole conversation, as far as I'm concerned, as to where we should be looking to build. I am okay with looking at the value engineering and possible redesign, but I think at this point, we may want to just take the Butterfly Lot off our table for discussion and let the farmer's market and county and us work on that at a different time.
But I would kind of just weigh in, Mayor. By doing both of these motions, it doesn't preclude those kinds of options. They, I know the farmer's market have sent a letter expressing their interest and desire. I think it is worth exploring how we can make sure we accommodate the farmer's market as well as a full City Hall and a courthouse, and to relook or be able to test the feasibility of all of those requirements within this broader three-block area. And so unless it's important to preclude that conversation, I think moving forward on both motions actually prevents the broadest scope of flexibility for the council come mid-November.
Thank you.
And Counselor Pryor? I mean Counselor Clark, and then Counselor Pryor, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question that has since been answered, but I will say that I will be voting against the motion, because I don't want to throw good money after bad. I think it's the wrong location and the wrong plan.
Counselor Pryor?
Thank you. I think the City Manager kind of got to the point I was going to make, which is, we may ultimately wind up abandoning the Butterfly Lot for a number of reasons, not the least of which is the one you said. But if we're, if we're thinking about rebidding City Hall, we've got a period of time that we could either be using to explore and look and talk, or we could be sitting on our hands waiting for the rebid time. And I don't think we want to do that. I think the value engineering conversation would be a good one, but I agree, we absolutely need to make a decision by November 15th. I don't want to go beyond that. And so I think we can have whatever conversations we want to, as long as we reach a conclusion by November 15th, whatever that is. In the other part, where it says, "investigate options for value engineering and possible redesign," I would assume that means as you come up with ideas, you will be bringing them to us for our response or our approval. There may be some behind-the-scenes value engineering elements that could be incorporated. But if it's any sort of a significant engineering or redesign option, I'm just assuming that you would make time in a work session to bring them to us to evaluate.
For sure. And I think what would happen is, during your break, we'd do some initial work, and then I would anticipate coming back to the council early into your next time period in the fall, and have just that kind of a conversation.
Counselor Zelenka?
I was kind of surprised to see that there's nothing in here about Phase Two and the potential for old, the old courthouse.
That's the wraparound.
Well, that, that's the new City Hall on the current lot and the wraparound. I'm talking about the old courthouse potential as a revised, or remodeled space for Phase Two. I'm surprised not to see any of that in here, because I don't see how those things can't be linked.
Well, what, I think I sent in the email that the intent really is to also have the conversation about Phase Two as we evaluate the various options. And so what I think the council, at least what I've understood, is you're interested in, how do we accommodate a full City Hall in whatever goes forward? And we're calling it now Phase One and Two, but how do we ensure that both Phase One and Two are planned for and doable regardless of what the final layout and what properties are actually used? So our intent would be to include both of those, or a full City Hall in all of these conversations.
And also the potential for Phase Two and Old Courthouse?
Yes, because the Phase Two and Old Courthouse has been proposed, or at least talked about by the county, as well as, there has been some conversation around this table, so yes.
Yeah. I think that's real important, because the wraparound envision, is, envisions the place where Phase Two would be.
Right.
So you have to have that conversation involved there, which is why I didn't, I think it should actually say the wraparound and incorporating the Old Courthouse as Phase Two. When we talked about Phase Two, how many people were, I know we don't know exactly, but what was the range of the number of people that were talking about being in?
Employees in the Phase Two.
Moving, yeah, moving over there.
What about square footage?
Seventy-five, right? Yeah, I don't talk in terms of number of employees, I talk in terms of square footage, and it, the range could be anywhere from 80 to 120 square feet, depending on how much consolidation we want to go for, based on?
Thousand square feet.
Current uses with some growth projected into that.
Maybe 100, 200 employees.
Yeah, I don't. So the other thing I was thinking about was, I want to make sure that in this conversation, parking gets built into this, because once the Butterfly Lot goes away, that's the parking for the courthouse, they have to figure out how to do that. If the Butterfly Lot, where's the parking for City Hall, new City Hall going to be? And if we used Old Courthouse, Butterfly Lot was Old Courthouse, so if you've got to build structured parking for 100 to 200 people, it's $30,000 to $40,000 a slot. So you're talking maybe 30 to 60 million, maybe $8 million for parking to do that, which is just starting to add dollars and dollars and dollars to this potential, potential work plan that we're going here.
But I would say, the purpose of motion one is to respond to what the council talked about was, to be ready to rebid a Phase One design, excuse me, in its, in the vicinity or in its current location, in the next best bidding environment, which is February, March. And that's really the intent of motion one. Motion two, the intent of that is, is to really talk about all those different kinds of questions in the context of, is there a potential either different location, Butterfly Lot, or where we co-locate the courthouse with City Hall on the current City Hall block? And knowing that for any and all of those, parking becomes important in the context of the whole area and around the Civic Center, partnerships with the county. So all of those necessarily will have to be provided back to the council for your ultimate decision in that. So our intent would be to provide all of that, so you can make an informed decision.
Right. So parking and Old Courthouse is all going to be incorporated into that conversation?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I still stand where I was last time, which is, I think the better way to go is to accept the bids that we have now and continue with the current process. I think we're likely just to add significant dollars to this project. So hopefully, the engineering and red, value engineering redesign can whack off enough to overcome all those cost increases, but I'm not real confident in that.
Counselor Evans?
Oh, I just was going to say that I think that this, this motion and the motion to follow gives us an opportunity to take a pause, to rethink, and to work on a number of options for this three-block civic complex with the county, in terms of a partnership and a collaboration. As far as parking is concerned, you know, I think that, you know, we're trying to reduce carbon footprint. I thought we were trying to minimize the amount of parking spaces that we need versus building out for single occupancy vehicle parking. I think we need to look at more towards, you know, how we, you know, leverage our opportunities around transit and other things to make this a walkable, bikeable, transit-friendly space. So, yes, we have to have parking, that's clearly necessary, but I also think that, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, this build, this building, series of buildings or complex is going to be as sustainable and as earth-friendly as we possibly can get. And I think that without getting into deep dive specifics, that our motions that we're going forward with in the next couple of motions will give us an opportunity to reevaluate where we are and to maybe move forward with a better project as we go towards the November deadline.
So Glenn, before we get to the second motion, can we just, we talked about this this morning, so it seems to me this is something that will keep coming up unless people see it on the paper or hear us say it, what we really mean that we're taking into consideration, whether it's parking, whether it's this building, whether it's the farmer's market, probably should all be sort of called out. And that would be my suggestion, but that's up to you and the rest of you, but that would be to kind of, because people were going to be looking at the intentionality of this. Okay, so we're going to vote on motion one. Oh, Claire, are you there? I mean Counselor Charette?
Yes, I am.
Did you have any comment you wanted to make?
No.
Okay, so we're going to, all those in favor of motion one indicate. One.
I vote yes.
Two, three, four. Counselor Charette?
I vote yes.
Five. In opposition? One, two, three. It passes. Okay, so now we're at motion two. And did you want him to add those things?
He's working on something right now to try to add something.
Okay, why don't we, yeah, why don't we wait until what the city attorney comes up with here?
It will be a new sentence added after the first full sentence. So it would read, "I move to direct the City Manager to work with the county and the court to investigate the following possibilities. One, a new City Hall on the Butterfly Lot and a courthouse on a full City Hall block. Two, Phase One of a new City Hall as currently planned in a wraparound courthouse. And three, other options that may arise," this is the new sentence. "Factors to consider include but are not limited to parking, Phase Two, and the farmer's market." And then continuing with what's there, "The joint work with the county and the court shall be completed by November 15th, 2016. This motion is contingent on the county agreeing to, one, obtain a judicial declaration that removes any legal question about the deed restriction prohibiting City Hall on the Butterfly Lot, and, two, an arrangement acceptable to the City Manager whereby the county assists the city in funding the analysis needed to evaluate the above options in this motion."
Okay, I think I've got it. And correct.
What he said?
Oh, yeah, well, what he said.
Okay, that.
It's easier, it's easier, to be honest.
Second? Second. Moved and seconded, discussion?
This is the 99th what-he-said motion we've ever done.
I don't see any discussion. All right, ready to vote? Counselor Charette, I want to check with you. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, ma'am.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Counselor Charette?
I vote yes.
Seven. In opposition? One, it passes. All right, thank you all. One more little step down the road here. All right. Next up, item B, is a work session on cell towers in residential areas.
All right, thank you. I don't think we can do this in a minute and five seconds. Can't quite beat that, but we'll give it a try. Let's see, last year, council asked for a little bit of research about cell towers. Actually, would you like to briefly let them know about that?
Okay, so I just want to give you a summary of where you've been and where we're going. It's kind of why we're here. So last year, what we did is we looked at some code provisions from different jurisdictions, mostly in California. Glendale was kind of the main city that we were looking at and looking to see what we could do with our code to help protect residential neighborhoods from possible development of cell towers. So there were four things that the council came up with and directed staff to work with the code and try to change. And those are in the AIS that you have today as A, B, and C. I said four, because B actually has two different things in it. The first one, the way our code currently reads, the, there are cell towers allowed in R1, so we're, we're kind of changing the burden on that, and we're saying they're actually prohibited unless the applicant can demonstrate that they need to fill a significant gap in service. So shifting that burden. The second thing was, we tightened up some of the application requirements. The applicants who wanted to build a cell tower would have to, in their application, demonstrate why they need the cell tower, that they need it in order to fill a significant gap in service. And it also required them to do an alternative configuration analysis that made them give alternatives of configurations of the cell tower technology. And then finally, what you directed staff to do is look at limiting the heights of cell towers to a height that's only necessary to fill the identified service gap. So if there was a limit in the zone that was 100, but they really only needed 80 feet in order to fill the service gap, then they would be limited to that. So in the meantime, there've been some, we've reviewed another local jurisdiction in California, Calabasas, and situations come up in front of staff that made us realize that there's a loophole that may need to be filled. So what we're here doing is saying, okay, you gave us the direction to do those three, four things earlier, and then we're wanting direction from you on whether we can go ahead and add these other things. So D, E, and F are those, those new suggested changes to the code. The first one deals with undergrounding. Our code requires currently that ancillary facilities, like generators, have to be undergrounded unless you get a variance. So what we're proposing is that in the R1 zone, where the applicant has demonstrated a significant gap in service that they need to fill, so they do get the tower, that any ancillary facilities have to be undergrounded unless you get a variance. And then if you get that variance, you also have to put those facilities in an enclosed building, if they're above ground. The next one was actually the one that came up in front of staff recently, a loophole where our code says that you can collate antennas on an existing building. So we, what we want to do is fill that loophole where someone could say, "Oh, well, let's build the building," and then we can co-locate on it. So changing the code to make sure that that's not allowed. And then the last one was something that was taken from the Calabasas code, that our code currently says that the setback from property lines has to be basically the height of the tower, and we would change that to 150% of the height of the tower, so the tower plus half. The setback would be greater from property lines in the R1 zone.
Yeah, thank you. And I didn't have a whole lot to add to that, just that, in general, this is a, it's a targeted update to the code that really tries to get at the question of impacts in residential areas from cell towers. So we're trying to keep it targeted as much as we can to try to bring in some of the things that Ann mentioned, and get the code updated as quickly as possible, so these can be in place.
Great.
Yeah, I have a question, and going back to E. So when we were presented a few weeks back with the possible location of a cell tower at the Bethel Temple church location, and they talked about, you know, and this has been talked about before, and other potential sightings of cell towers, the building of a, I don't know, is it an addition or another building or something that looks or appears to be, say, for instance, in the Bethel Temple case, it would have been a steeple. In another case in South Eugene, it would have been a building or a structure that would have looked like a fir tree. What constitutes a building in this particular case? Does that mean a freestanding structure? Or would that be, in the case of what was presented before us, an addition to a building? I think, you know, I'm not quite sure. I need some clarification on what that particularly means in this case.
Yeah, so, were you going to address it?
This is intended to take care of, as Ann said, those loopholes, and so the code language hasn't been drafted yet. This is just direction to staff.
Develop the code.
To develop the code language that would then go out for public review, that eventually would go to the Planning Commission and eventually come to council. The intent of drafting this, though, would be to ensure that none of those things happen. And so it may be as simple as, of course, it never is, but it may be as simple as, nobody would be able to get a permit to locate a cell antenna array on any structure that was constructed under a building permit that was issued within the last however many months. And so virtually any structure is going to require some kind of building permit. If that building permit was issued in, and I don't know what the timeframe here is, 12 months, 18 months, whatever the timeframe is, building permit was issued, you know, 18 months ago, okay, then you could locate it. But for a cell company that's looking to just construct something in order to put an antenna array on it, they're probably not going to construct it today, wait 18 months, and then put the antenna on. So this is intended to close that loophole, however it needs to be written.
Okay. Betty, you're up.
Thank you. 150% of the height, would that, how, how far would that be? A county requires 100?
1,200.
Fifty, what?
1,200.
Talking about, I think you're talking about two different issues there. One is, so one is, the setback that we're talking about here is setting back the cell to, where the cell tower is located, 150% of the height of the tower. So if the tower is 100 feet tall, the setback would be 150 feet from the property line.
And is that as far as the county requires?
I'm not sure that the county has that setback. The 1,200 feet that you're talking about is the setback from, what we have currently is a setback from existing towers. You can't have a new tower within, I think it's 1,200 feet of an existing tower. That's a different issue than what we're talking about.
Doesn't the county have a setback from residents?
I'm not sure what they're, I'm not sure what the county's requiring.
I would like to know what they have. And also, this all sounds like good changes, but are these all the, did you find everything that's possible for us to do?
We're hoping so. We're, I mean, we could assume that someone would come in during the process of the hearings and suggest something else. And so that's what Robin was indicating, is that we're trying to target this, to get something through. It wasn't a process where we're going to revamp and redo the whole code. It was kind of targeted toward some quick fixes that we can do to help protect neighborhoods.
And how difficult would it be for people to say it's essential? I mean, is there a guarantee, is there some way that we could say you can't, they can just say it's, we need it for service?
There's a, well, that's what the process is for, is for the applicant. They're going to be saying that they need it for, to fill a significant gap, and it's going to be up to the opponents to be able to come back with evidence to show that it's not. That's the situation we're going to be in, and that's because that's what the federal law requires.
Okay, well, I hope that we get a chance to do everything we can do legally to protect people who are concerned. Thank you.
Chris?
Thank you. I really appreciate the work that you've done so far, and I particularly like the fact that you looked for best practices in other cities, so that you could see, kind of on the ground, what's been done. And I think what you're proposing here looks really good. For me, the goal is to try to create the best balance of allowing this technology to be available, but not compromise the livability in residential areas. I mean, I think that's really the goal here is, we, I'm not a part of a group that might say, "We need to stop building cell towers." But I do think I'm a part of a group that says, "If we're going to build them, they have to be built in a way that does not compromise residential neighborhoods." And I think that's really the balance you're trying to achieve here. And so I think these recommendations are good ones for, to try to accomplish that purpose. I don't know if this is 100% of every possible thing that can be done. We can always probably modify later if something new comes up. But I think the six that you have here, to a reasonable person, look like reasonable recommendations that don't somehow eliminate the possibility of providing cell service, which, I have a cell phone, most everybody here does, we want to have good cell service, but I don't want to do it at the expense of neighborhoods and livability. So I think that's what you're trying to do here, and I think you've done a good job. So I think that's what you're trying to do here, and I think you've done a good job. So I'm very supportive of these six recommendations.
I'm going to put the motion on the table.
Absolutely. I move to direct staff to prepare amendments to the city code, including items D through F as described in today's AIS, in addition to the previously directed amendments.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Claire?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you all. Item number three, or C, Avago Technologies Enterprise Zone Investment, City Manager.
I'll just turn it over to Denny for this conversation.
So this evening, City Council is being asked to consider a two-year extension of Avago Technologies Enterprise Zone tax exemption. And if you recall, we were here back in May giving council an overview of not only the Avago Technologies investment, but the enterprise zone and specifically the two-year extension and how that operates. Today, there is a resolution for you to consider that would grant the two-year tax exemption to Avago Technologies. If you recall, the three-year tax exemption is the standard. Three-year tax exemptions are basically companies, they have access to that exemption by right if they meet the basic enterprise zone criteria. And the two-year extension really is a special consideration that has to be approved by the City Council and the Lane County Board of Commissioners as a joint sponsor of our enterprise zones. Just to review, in order to get the two-year extension, a company must meet a few things. One, they have to meet a compensation standard that's 150% of the average county wage, and we've reviewed that in the past. The zone sponsor can place additional conditions on that two-year tax exemption, and we'll talk about that in just a second. And they must agree to those conditions to the two-year extension via written agreement. Just to quickly review the Avago Technologies investment and their exemption, they're proposing to invest $400 million in the former Heineck's facility. About 100 million of that would be building improvements, about 300 million of that would be production equipment. They're proposing 229 jobs as a minimum as part of their first phase, and I would consider this to be a first phase, although they haven't disclosed any future plans. Our hope, and I think their hope, would be to expand the facility over time because they won't use all of it initially. The range of jobs they've described to us are production technicians, so those are kind of floor technicians, people who work on the production floor, process technicians, which they consider to be kind of junior engineering-type positions, and then equipment technicians, which are basically engineers' degree-type positions. So there is a range, but they intend to, again, meet a pretty favorable compensation standard, offer benefits and so forth. So we would consider these to be, to be good jobs, these 229 jobs. The value of the three-year tax exemption is approximately 14 million. That's an estimate at this time. That's the best we can estimate, given what we know today. The five-year exemption, or the two additional years, is about $7 million in additional tax exemption value to the company. So if the five-year exemption were granted, the total tax exemption is forecasted at about 21 million over five years. The city's portion of the three-year exemption is about $6 million. The city's portion of the two-year extension is about $3 million. So really, what the council's being asked to consider today is that two-year extension, which is about $3 million in City of Eugene tax impact. If you consider that to be an investment, so, you know, 1.5 million dollars a year for year four and five roughly, and offset that really with what's the community benefit, there's about $13.5 million in annual payroll that we would forecast from those 229 jobs based on them meeting that compensation standard. If you put a multiplier in that, again, we think the community, the community impact, economic impact reaches probably around $30 million a year, compared to that maybe $1.5 million that we're really asked to be considered as far as part of that two-year extension. I mentioned the additional conditions. We have a proposal for the council to consider. Again, the two-year extension can come with additional conditions that the city and county can place on that tax exemption. The first would be that they maintain an average annual of at least 229 jobs for the full duration of the tax exemption. So if the two-year extension is granted, the expectation or the requirement would be, in order to get the extra two years, they'd have to maintain an annual average of at least 229 jobs. We've also proposed an annual payment that would be made in lieu of the tax exemption. And the proposal is that Avago Technologies would make a $100,000 a year payment for each of the five years of the tax exemption for a total of half a million dollars. We've worked with Avago. They have a strong preference for an annual single payment agreement. They have a strong preference for, or an expressed interest in supporting youth employment, youth employment programs, education programs that are focused on STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. So we've proposed that such payment, annual payment, be directed to the Lane Workforce Partnership, and that sometime between now and approximately 2019 and 2020, when we actually might see that first payment, when their tax exemption begins, that we work with Lane Workforce Partnership and the local schools to identify specific programmatic needs for the use of those funds. Some examples that we've cited are the Workforce Partnership's Pre-Aprentice Program, their Youth Work Experience Program, and Career Ready Net Certificate programs, and also Lane ESD's STEM Hub that has been recently put in place. Those are examples of the types of uses and targeted uses for those funds. As far as the timeline, Avago Technologies is currently starting the facility design, redesign of the facility. That will basically occur this year in 2016. They anticipate starting building renovation in 2017, installing equipment in 2018, and hope to be in production by 2019 is the best guess. It could be 2018 late, potentially. So their first year of tax exemption would really, again, be in 2000, tax year 2019, 20 is what we had anticipated. Just to summarize, again, we've talked about in the past, we think Avago Technologies is a great use for the facility. It's been vacant a long time. I think it's a great fit for Eugene, or the company's a great fit for Eugene. Again, they spun out of HP back in 1999, which obviously has some Oregon roots. In fact, we recently met their site manager, who had retired from HP and was living right outside of Corvallis. So their first real, you know, major employer, employee, actually, has some Oregon roots. They've also indicated that there is, what they're discovering is there are a lot of ex-Heineck's employees still living in Eugene in this area, and so pretty excited about the prospects of bringing some of those folks back to Avago. Our research indicates that, you know, they have a good reputation as an employer, they have a solid stance on environmental issues, they operate a similar facility in Fort Collins, they're one of the largest, I think, top three employers in Fort Collins, and they're growing rapidly. They've invested over a billion dollars over the last five years in Fort Collins. We've talked about the loss of manufacturing jobs in our community during the Great Recession. We've lost about a third of our manufacturing jobs in this community, so I think they represent a really good opportunity to bring some of those manufacturing jobs back. Our recommendation is to approve the resolution granting the two-year extension based on the terms that are in the resolution. The resolution includes an acceptance declaration that Avago would be required to sign, which really serves as their binding agreement that's required as part of the two-year extension. So with that, I'll entertain questions.
Thank you, Denny.
I just wanted to add a couple things that I think that half million for youth employment and STEM fits right in with what we had out there with our regional prosperity work. So seems important to me to identify that as moving forward goals we have had, not only as a council, but as a cross-jurisdictional goals for regional prosperity.
And if I could just add that our sector strategies team work with the tech sector. I think the primary concern or consideration for the tech sector is finding or getting access to employees with technology kind of talent. So they were very interested in what the school districts were doing and what we were doing to prepare, even down to the 4J level. What are we doing to prepare the next generation of employees for the tech sector? So I think this is definitely what we've heard from the technology sector.
I don't think you mentioned it, but you might have. I just want to be sure the public understands that they'll still be paying taxes on the land even before they get it up and going.
Yes, and they're currently paying about $590,000 a year, and that will stay on the tax rules. That's correct.
Thank you. Wanted to know that. All right, anybody else have any, Chris?
Just a clarifying question. They already qualify for the three years, so they'll be getting that because it's the state. If they were to have the three years and we didn't grant the two years, would they still be bound by any of these requests in Section 1?
Section 1 being...
Would any of those be applicable to them if we didn't authorize the additional two years?
What they would be subject to is the basic three-year criteria...
From the state.
That the state requires of every project. That's correct.
Which doesn't include what we have added in here in Section 1.
That's correct.
So for the additional two-years extension, we can also add all of these additional elements, I'll call them goodies, but things that we would get as a result of granting the additional two years, which includes what I'm particularly drawn to, is a significant payment to the Lane Workforce Partnership, support for science, technology, and engineering, a guaranteed salary, guaranteed employment. That sounds like a pretty good value for the additional two years. So once again, you're not giving money away. I've been thinking of this as an investment in getting something in return. You already talked adequately about the payroll and all the other stuff, and people could say, well, shoot, they're going to do that anyway. I mean, I've heard that a lot. But they don't have to do any of this stuff under Section 1 if they don't want to, if we don't grant the conditions that would put this contract into effect. So for me, that's a compelling reason to go ahead and grant the additional two years to get the benefit of all of these things you've got outlined in Section 1. To me, that seems like a reasonable trade, so I would be fully supportive of granting the two-year extension.
Alan.
Yeah, my calculation on these is usually, what are we giving up? What are we getting? And in this case, we're giving up about $3 million worth of tax revenue. What we get is half a million dollars for Lane Workforce Partners for youth employment and then money for STEM, so that's down to 2.5 million. Then you get 229 full-time wage people at 150% of Lane County's median or average annual compensation, and you get that guaranteed for two years.
The full term? For five, actually.
Well, you get it for the extra two years, but, yeah, so you get it automatically for the first five, three. So then, it's kind of an apples and oranges, kind of hard to compare those two things. What's a guaranteed job worth at 150% of the average wage? And there's a boatload of them at 229. So I don't, so it's not super clear, but I usually don't favor these kind of property tax exemption or enterprise zones because studies just keep showing that the companies leave at the end of the tax break, and usually they're for big businesses, and there's no callbacks for failure to perform, and there's no discernible public benefits. But in this case, I think this program's actually well-designed. There are public benefits to be had, and it handles most of those concerns. Has a cap of $32,000 per job, has a 25% clawback if they don't perform. And it, and what we've seen in this program is for small businesses, this isn't exactly a small business, but it's not a huge business either, and the benefit of the wages, benefits, health insurance are all pretty big. So all in all, I think it's, I usually don't like these things, but in this case, it's well-designed and the benefits are equal to or outweigh the cost.
George Brown.
I will not be supporting the two-year extension. I think that it's been generous enough, the $14 million three-year extension, this tax break from the state. Look, you know, there, Heineck's spent $1.3 billion to build that plant, Avago bought it for 20 million, that's 15 cents on the dollar. We have great water rates, we have great electricity rates, all the infrastructure's already built, the streets, the sewers, you know, the hookups for the water and electricity. The rates are very attractive, by the way, they're very competitive compared to other places around the country. You know, the $3 million, with the $400 million investment plus 20 million, you know, to buy the property, 420, $3 million at 1.5 million a year is nothing for Avago. It's nothing. It's dropping the bucket. It's a heck of a lot for the city of Eugene, for parks that haven't been developed yet, for addressing the homelessness issue, and all these, all these other demands that, you know, we're constantly trying to figure out how to meet. And if we didn't grant this, they're still going to go ahead and do the project. It's a great, it's a great, it's a good project. I'm not, I'm not, obviously, it's a good project. That's not the point. The point is, I don't think this is a deal-breaker. I don't think $3 million is a deal-breaker for them, and yet it's, it's a, you know, a really important bump to the general fund. It can be used for all sorts of really pressing needs that the community has. Avago certainly wants to be a good neighbor with these other things they've proposed. I think that, I don't think this would be a deal-breaker. I think they would say, well, we didn't get that one, but, you know, we got everything else, so it, we'll still do it, we'll still do it. That's my feeling, and I will not support the two-year extension. Thank you.
Daddy.
Thank you. So are you saying if we don't give them the two-year extension, they will give the good wages for three years, and then suddenly they'll start laying people off and giving less and paying less?
No, I think their intent is to pay well from day one and continue to do that. That's what they've done in Fort Collins.
And I, we're talking about foregoing taxes, and then they'll give part of it back to us. It sounds like the hub all over again. I will not vote for this at all, and I think it's, if they give, if we get the taxes and we, workforce partnership's a good, that's a good thing for them to get some money, but we could give them the money if we wanted to, if we got the taxes we're supposed to get. If there was a way not to give them the three-year tax exemption, I would do that, but I definitely wouldn't vote for giving them extra tax exemptions. I said that they want to be a good citizen of the community, they should want to pay, help support the government. Thank you.
Claire, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Yes, Mayor, I would.
Go right ahead.
Thanks. You know, so I'm very pleased that Avago is making this investment in our community. I look forward to them being an employer here. From everything I've learned, I think they'll be a fine employer and a good addition to our community. I'm fine with them being able to take advantage of our enterprise zone program, but I am not convinced of the need for the two-year extension. I believe they got a very good deal on the former Heineck's property. It's been well-maintained, as have the various permits that Heineck's had in place for the semiconductor manufacturing that they were doing at the plant. And in addition to this ready-to-go site that I doubt they'll find anywhere else in the country, I also think our community offers them some other advantages in terms of a workforce, including former Heineck's employees, who are going to be ready to hit the ground running and help make their endeavor a real success. So while I don't at all blame them for seeking this extension on the tax break, and I appreciate their efforts to be responsive to the public benefit criteria, I am not going to support the extension.
Okay, you want to put the motion on the table, Greg?
Yeah. I move to adopt Resolution Number 5166 for the two-year exemption extension.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five in favor, in opposition. One, two, and you're in opposition, Claire?
That's right, I vote no.
Okay, five and three, it passes. Thank you. So now we're going to move on to Counselor Paulings' motion here, which is in front of you.
Do you want me to put the motion out and speak to it?
Sure. Sure. Why don't we put the motion out?
Okay. I move to direct the city manager to initiate the rezoning of properties at 945 and 955 Coburg Road to C1.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I was approached by the property owner, Ms. Benson's attorney, and representatives of the Harlow Neighborhood Association. This has been an ongoing discussion for many years as to what Ms. Benson could or could not do with her property. One of the parcels is R1, and the other parcel was rezoned to R2. Glenn, correct me if I'm getting this wrong. And her original intent was to build two- or three-story apartments in that one parcel, which would have backed up to single-family dwellings. So the Harlow Neighborhood Association filed an appeal with Luba, and that's currently pending. They have entered into negotiations and have come up with a settlement agreement that all parties are happy with. That's the Harlow Neighborhood Association representatives, Ms. Benson and her attorney, and the people that actually live around those properties. They're requesting that both parcels be Zone C1. That will eliminate the three-story apartments and will also allow Ms. Benson to develop the property. The reason why I'm asking the city to initiate this, because years and years ago, there was some, maybe some confusion or some errors made. I really don't know the circumstances because it happened a long time ago. Had to do with Metro Plan, zoning colors on maps, and a bunch of other things that caused this whole thing to get kick-started. In order to save everybody involved some money, I'm asking that the council initiate this zone change.
Okay, questions, comments? Yes, Clark, Mike.
This is quasi-judicial, yes? When it gets to us?
This will not get to you. A zone change goes to a hearings official and then the planning commission. So what you're doing, and that's why you're not actually initiating, you're directing the manager to initiate.
Mayor, if I could, one other thing to add to what George said. Part of the settlement agreement is also certain deed restrictions that everybody has agreed to, so it's not just any use under C1, but it's those uses that the property owner and the neighbors have worked out. And so the C1 will allow the property owner to engage in the uses she wants to make of the property. The deed restrictions will ensure that the adjacent property owners are protected.
Mike, are you through?
Yes.
Okay, Alan.
So, this is pretty unusual for this council to get involved at this issue like this. I can't even remember in my 10 years if I've ever done anything like this. Have we?
I don't know if the council has ever done anything exactly like this. The council has taken up, and I don't know if it's your 10 years or my 20-some-odd years, but the council has taken up occasionally issues that a particular property owner has raised. It may not have been to initiate a zone change. It may have been as part of some other package to say, "Hey, we'll fold that in and we'll deal with it in a particular," in the way that people have agreed to. The one that comes to mind, which is a little bit different, but back when Measure, I don't remember which one it was, Measure 7 or Measure 37 was adopted, there was a property in the Jefferson West Side area where the property owner and the adjacent properties and the Neighborhood Association all reached an agreement as to how a particular piece of property should be used, and then the council approved that deal. It was a little bit different because it was a Measure 37 claim, but that one came to the council, and the council approved that.
Yeah, I'm kind of a little bit worried about the precedence of us doing something like this. Maybe George or Glenn, you can answer this. So if everybody's in agreement, why are we getting involved?
Well, two reasons. One, like I said, is to kind of save everybody, the parties involved, some additional monies. The second reason is, years ago, when we, the zoning maps were made and the Metro Plan and the Willa Kenzie Area Plan were all put together, it was inconsistent.
I remember that.
And that's what caused this whole thing to get started at the very, very onset of this several years back. So I'm looking at the city acting a little bit in good faith to try to help straighten out some inconsistencies or some perceived mistakes that were made. I don't want to place blame on anybody, but there were some inconsistencies. So I think that perhaps, and it's not really the city taking some responsibility, but the city at least saying, you know, "We're willing to work with the people involved in this."
So if we approve this, can you tell me the, if the process that would occur, and if we don't approve this, the process occur, and what the difference is?
The primary difference between how they might move forward is the fees, it's basically the application fee for the zone change. So the property owner is going to be preparing the application either way, and she's agreed that even under this, she would be preparing the application. Then there are the application fees, which is basically staff time, hearings, officer time, and the city would not be charging the property owner for, charging that application fee. If the council doesn't do this, then when it goes forward, the city would be charging that application fee.
In any case, we'll do the work.
If an application is submitted, then yes, either way, we would process the application. Once it gets beyond, okay, the application has now been submitted, the fact that the council has initiated or the property owner initiated doesn't matter. At that point, it becomes the quasi-judicial matter that Mike had asked about, and the hearings official will decide, should it be approved? And then it can be appealed to the planning commission if somebody disagrees.
And how much is the fee in this case?
We're guessing about $5,000 range.
Minimal.
Right.
Really, this is about goodwill more than it's about the cost?
Yeah, all parties involved have already spent tens of thousands of dollars on this process.
Having been involved in them, yeah, I know that one. Okay, thanks.
Chris.
Thank you. Actually, I think Alan raised a really good point. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city to start getting involved in zone changes. They happen all the time. In fact, one of the ways in which the council has been very deliberate is in saying, "We don't get involved in what is a very complicated, very detail-intensive process." And so I wouldn't want to just start establishing precedents where whenever we feel like it, we come in and start initiating zone changes. But I think George's point is, this isn't just your typical, somebody comes in and wants a zone change. This is actually the result of an apparent error in planning on the part of somebody, probably the city in some way. And so, in to some degree, the cost, the expense, and the time that these people are having to go through is a result of an error on the city's part years and years ago. And I think that, to me, would be a little bit of a mitigation that says, "No, we do not," as Alan says, "we do not want to get involved in zone changes just on a regular basis or setting a precedent for it." But in those instances where the city may have a degree of responsibility for helping to resolve the situation, and as a matter of goodwill, plus $5,000 is nothing to sneeze at. In this one particular case, as an exceptional point, we would do it here. But I agree, we don't want to start going down the road of, you know, "Hey, I want to have a zone change. Why don't I go ask my favorite city councillor to propose that for me?" I do not want to go down that road. But where we have a certain degree of responsibility, I'm comfortable with granting it in this one case.
I just remember this discussion several times before, and I remember the work that people have gone to to reach a point of agreement. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the idea that we don't want to, on an arbitrary basis, begin, you know, allowing some people to escape the fees necessary for a process like this, and arbitrarily somebody else has to pay. But I will say that the council has begun processes in the last year or so that would end up in zone changes where conflicts ensued. This is one of those cases where the neighbors and the property owner and everybody else have all finally worked together to come to a agreement. And I think that's something that we should, we should, for lack of a better word in this case, reward and help. We should be a part of the solution, so I'm willing to be in favor of it.
Daddy.
Is this anything like Willamette Street?
What do you mean, like Willamette?
Not wanting a tall building near them.
I, oh, good. Thank you.
I have like four more days on the job in planning and development. This is really different. This is an individual application of somebody that's on Coburg Road, so they are on one of our transit corridors. And there was, there's been a dispute over some of the zoning and underlying Metro Plan discussion, and so that is on hold right now. So we don't actually know whether there was an error, and if there was an error, it was very, it was a long time ago, or not. What we do know is that the property owner and the Neighborhood Association has, and neighbors, have come to an agreement to rezone it to C1 with these conditions, as Glenn said. And that's very compatible with what we're hoping to see happen on transit corridors. So really, this motion is really, I think, the intent, as I've understood it, is that we're partnering with the other three groups that have already settled and saying, "We'll waive the application fees as long as you prepare the application." But I think we support the desire to go from R1 or R2 to C1. So it's, I think it's very responsive to the neighbors to make it more livable and still meet the Envision Eugene requirements.
That sounds okay, but if people on Willamette Street don't want a multifamily house next to them or in front of them, and the owner agrees, then isn't that comparable? I don't understand why it's not comparable.
It's possible I'm not completely understanding your question.
I'm not understanding the...
And I think that...
They don't, the reason they want the rezoning is they don't want a big multifamily building. Is that right?
The property owner wants the rezoning, and the neighbors have put some restrictions on it, and they've agreed to that. The neighbors have said, "We'll support your zoning request to go from R1 or R2 to C1 as long as you meet some additional requirements to protect livability." So it's kind of a win-win. What's not clear is anybody else could still, other than the Neighborhood Association and the nearby neighbors, somebody else could still appeal it, but the people that were the most vocal that you heard from several years ago are all in agreement that this is a good path forward. So this would be like if some, if one of the property owners on Willamette Street wanted to rezone and the property, and the neighboring properties were fighting it, and they came into an agreement. This one's just a little bit more complicated because there's this possibility that there was an error in the maps.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Claire?
I vote yes.
Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We have time now, so we're going to take up the rest stop issue. What? I want to do the rest stop.
And this is really a follow-up to a conversation from last week where we had come forward with a particular piece of property that would have been joint with the county and ODOT, and at that meeting, we suggested we come back with some additional site possibilities, and that's what we're doing now.
And to that end, I do want to provide you an update on the status of the rest stop that you approved last week on the corner of Roosevelt and North Danabo. Your approval of that site was contingent upon ODOT agreeing to release the property, and we've learned from the county that ODOT has not agreed to release the property. So at this point, we don't have an alternative for NHS, who's been asked to vacate the county's behavioral health site. So Michael is going to talk to you a little bit about the process that CMO staff have been working on to identify sites that may work throughout the city. The direction you gave us last week was that we could come back with options that look at the ordinance criteria in a more relaxed manner, and so he has three options for you to consider today that do just that.
So before we start talking specific sites, I just wanted to kind of step back and let you know what our process was. So we essentially went back to the drawing board and looking at city-owned properties. So we'd be thorough, and there's been lots of folks asking us, "Are there any other city properties?" So we wanted to be able to say we did due diligence this time and feel pretty confident in what options are. And we really didn't know until we went through that process again. So what we did is, we did a search of all city-owned tax lots with the following criteria, that they had to be within the UGB, within a half a mile of a bus stop. We excluded if, any tax lot that was in, within 1,000 feet of a school, because the ordinance says it can't be near a school. We excluded property within Ward 7. I'll put an asterisk there because one of those properties actually is in Ward 7. It's right on the edge. We'll talk a little bit about that. But for the most part, we excluded Ward 7 properties because we all know Ward 7 already shoulders a lot of that burden for our community. And we excluded all developed parks. So when we initially did that search, we produced 54 tax lots that met that criteria. And then what we did is we added in the 14 undeveloped park properties that we have in our inventory. And then what we did is we basically pulled up every one of these properties with aerial photography, and we just did a, we did a closer look to see what was really there. And we narrowed the list further. If a property had insufficient uplands, so if there was a lot of wetlands on site, if the configuration wasn't really feasible to support a site, so some of the property we own is really narrow or configured very strangely, that wouldn't really work to locate a rest stop on, it might not be accessible by a road. The current use really wasn't conducive to a rest stop, so we own a few active parking lots that are right smack in the middle of commercial areas or other active areas, or maybe there's a water reservoir on the property that consumes most of the site, and there's not enough room to do a rest stop, those kinds of things. We then also excluded everything we considered would be within a residential area. So, as you know, the ordinance says rest stops can't be located in residential areas. So if something, you know, was bordered on three sides with single-family residential use, we felt that that didn't meet the criteria. And that finally got us down to eight different properties to, we felt was worth going out in the field and really looking at. So we visited those sites, and of those, once we got through that process, we felt that the three that are in front of you have the highest likelihood of meeting the criteria of the ordinance, requiring minimal site improvements, meet the functional needs of the rest stop residents as well. And so you're looking at those three there, and in order that I would talk about them, there, the Amazon Corridor property, Chase Commons, and Lone Oak. Any questions about our process before I talk about the sites?
Doesn't look like, yes.
Have you made, have you made contact with any of the neighboring properties to just kind of get an idea of the feedback?
No, no, we haven't gone to that yet. We figured we'll wait till we have something that we had a likelihood of actually putting something there.
Alan?
So this is a paper study so far?
Correct. Our plan, our plan, this is really what we, kind of the same process we've done for all the rest stops. We look to you to find a location first, and then what we will do is we'll spend the next few days going out, knocking on all the doors, all the residents, all the businesses that are in close proximity, giving people some information. I leave my business card with folks, have them call me if you have any issues or problems. And so we will do the same thing on this one, yeah.
So you started with 96 city-owned properties, is that what you said?
Well, we started with over 1,000 tax lots we looked at, and then we ended up with 54 in the first cut, and then we got to eight, and now we're down to three after really looking at things. So I think the, the part of that story is that we don't have a lot of sites within at least the current constraints of the ordinance and direction that we've been given, that we don't have a long laundry list to choose from, basically.
Yeah, that's pretty clear. Okay.
So the first, first property is the Amazon Corridor. So each one of these is labeled at the top, so if you want to orient yourself to that, that one. This one is, and the easiest way to know where you are, it's the former Rexius operation. So... way to know where you are, it's the former Rexius operation. So we purchased part of that, the, the western part of that property when they left. And this aerial, unfortunately, I think, is a few years old, and it doesn't show exactly what's there. So we kind of ghosted in. There is a fairly large apartment complex called the Bailey that's new, and that's a neighbor of this site. Let's see, it's, it's in Ward 8. It's a little over five acres, roughly at Bailey Hill and 13th Avenue, which has been newly constructed in there. In terms of land uses, to the east, you've got the apartment complex. We've got single-family residential. To the south, including a planned subdivision there along Phantom Way and 13th, you can see the lots that are there. Light Industrial to the west, and then buffered on the north by Amazon Creek and, and the bike path. It's, some of the advantages is that it's close to the bike path. There's a bus stop conveniently located there on Bailey Hill. It's within walking distance to, so folks could get supplies, groceries that they need. And there, it is buffered by some non-residential uses to the, to the east and the, and the west and north.
I guess I would add to that, that there is a fair amount of camping that happens around that area, not authorized, but a fair amount, mostly car, car camping along some of the roads back in, in there. So, yes, Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Part of ordinance as it currently exists, not sited near residential or schools. This is four, five blocks from Churchill. So what, are you asking us to consider relaxing those standards of that ordinance? Or are you saying these fit within the current constraints of the ordinance?
These fit within a slightly relaxed interpretation of the ordinance.
Is that a yes?
So, and I would say Churchill is more than 1,000 feet, which is the criteria we've used to establish all of the current rest stops.
I used to live right up on the hill up there, yeah, I know where it is. I used to drive by this every day. So there's still, as you can see there, the apartments that are... Okay, thank you.
That's a huge apartment complex in there now. So, really big one.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, a couple of years ago, when we were, more than that now, when we were first, you know, setting up the rest stops in Opportunity Village, there was a list of, the staff had already filtered out, you know, some sites that met criteria. And I went and visited every one of them personally. And so I'm familiar with Lone Oak and Chase Commons. Rexius had not yet, you know, completed their arrangements to move and develop. And so this, this lot here was not on the list because it was still owned by Rexius, I imagine. But I'm very familiar with that area because I used to go there all the time for sale amendments and so. And yes, it is a fully built-out apartment complex over here. You know, when we look at these maps, we go, oh, my gosh, we're going to relax, you know, and they're going to be too close to residences. We're talking 19 people, I believe. Was that 19 people or Nightingale House? No, 20 is the maximum, yeah. So I will tell you that, 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 you just imagine 20 dots in a corner of one of these properties, near, near the street, but as far away as possible from residences. And that's how, that's going to be the footprint. It's going to be very small. It's not, it's not like, oh, this whole thing is going to be a homeless camp, you know? We know that the ones that are already in existence, they've been very good neighbors. We can go, we can look at Portland, and we can look at Seattle, the tent cities, three and four up in Seattle, and, and right to Dream 2, and just right downtown Portland. I mean, you cannot find a more dense area to locate a homeless camp. It's right on Burnside, and it's, you know, by the Chinatown Gate. And they've been wonderful neighbors, too. I mean, you know, the, the city wants them to move. I gather they can move to the east side soon, at some point. But the time that they've been there, there have been almost zero problems. And so, in fact, when I was looking at the camps in, in Portland and Seattle, I drove up there to look around in Olympia. And I drove, I drove right past it. I couldn't find it because they had a decorative fence of car hoods or something. You know, I thought it was an art installation. I didn't even know there were about 20 people behind that fence in one of the busiest parts of town. Car traffic and people walking all, on the streets. And Portland Saturday Market is right there, a block away. There have never been any problems. So I, I know that some of us were Larry, and then I was wondering myself, you know, what would this be like if it was anywhere near a residential neighborhood? And all the ones that are in existence have worked out just fine. So...
Thank you.
I'd be happy with any of these sites, as long as they don't...
Why don't you go over the...
Do you want me to keep going?
Keep going, please.
Okay, so the next, next site was, is Chase Commons. So that's in Counselor Pollings Ward. It's a little over four acres. There is a, it's right on a bus line there on Commons Drive. To the north there, some of the uses are, to the north, there's a residential care facility and the stadium park apartments. To the, to the east is a large residence there. And to the south is a drainage way and vegetation. And then to the west, immediately on the boundary of that property are additional multifamily apartments there. It's, this side, some of the advantages, it's, it's, it's fairly central. It's buffered to the south by the drainage feature and, and vegetation there. The, that bus line is, is a pretty good resource to access back into town, or I think even to the gateway area there, too. So that's, that's another option.
Why don't you go then to the last one, and then people can ask you any questions?
Okay, last one. All right. Last one is Lone Oak. So Lone Oak is in Counselor Soret's Ward, but it actually, Ross Lane on the east side, if you step across Ross Lane, you're in Counselor Clark's Ward. So it's right on the, kind of on the edge there. It's a little less than four acres. This one is the, located the farthest from a transit stop. It's probably 1,200 feet or so, right in front of the, I think the Fred Meyer's is probably the closest bus stop. Some of the uses around it, to the south, there's an E-Web substation. To the east is a large residence with then some vacant land. All that is zone residential, low-density residential. To the north, there's some additional kind of low-density residential. And then to the west, there's an assisted living facility, I think Selco Credit Union, and there's a, I think it's a medical facility, is that kind of brown-roofed structure there. And then further west is St. Venice and Fred Meyer's. This one is, it's within walking distance to shopping. Some of, it has some buffering from folks that live there by E-Web to the south. And it has some, it, it does have residential around it, but it's fairly low, low-density.
So I've got in the queue now. Mike, you're first, and Alan, and then George Polling.
Mayor, can you add me to the queue?
Sure, yep. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I did in the course, last couple of weeks where we've been having conversations around this, was speak with some county commissioners, get more information from them about the movement from the other county property and the importance of it. They actually called me to talk with them about it. And one of the things that I was struck with, that I kept asking my friends who worked down the hall there, was this strikes me as a county problem. The county is the health authority. This is a county issue to contend with. Why is it that it seems always the City of Eugene must find such a place when folks come from all over, much like they do, you know? And it seems to me more appropriate that the county would have better opportunities to find appropriate places. It's interesting to me as well that the county actually owns campgrounds. I mean, the county has several campgrounds within relative close proximity to Eugene that I wonder why they don't use when they're not open to the general public in the off-season from at Richardson and several other places where the facility's already set up, and there's showers there, and there's camping, and there's fire pits, and there's, you know. So I, I would hope that's a part of our conversation with the county at some point. The other piece is, I just, I, I can think of another piece of city property that takes up at least one square block. It's flat, it's dry, and it's clear. And I'm wondering why you ruled it out, I suppose. The one across the street?
Got to be specific.
Yeah, the piece of property across the street. Why'd you rule it out?
Well, so it's technically a construction site.
Okay.
And the part of the block that would be accept, potentially acceptable is actually being used. It's currently the site for McKenzie Commercial. And the other half is not, it can't, it, it wouldn't be safe to allow folks on there. It's considered a construction site.
Okay, thank you.
Alan, you're next.
So Opportunity Village Eugene and the rest stops were pilots. And I think they've been a tremendous success. Not much problems, well-managed, clean, small, manageable. And we called them pilots because we wanted to check out whether the concept worked. And if it worked, then we were going to replicate them. So it worked, and we should replicate them. Problem is, it's difficult to cite these things. And the criteria that we set up made it almost impossible. So without relaxing the criteria slightly, it, it becomes difficult to, to find a place to put these. So I think as we go through this process, and we talk about how to solve homelessness to the degree that we can, we need to have more Opportunity Village Eugene's, we need to have more rest stops, and we need to scatter them around the rest of the community. And so unless we're going to relax our criteria a little bit, that's going to be very difficult to do. So I'm okay with these three sites. I think they're, they're the next three on, on the, on the list to, to develop.
George Polling?
Thank you. Yeah, this, this morning, after Mia called me, the first thing I'd try to do is get ahold of Jennifer Yeh, who's the Harlan Neighborhood Association president. When we had this initial discussion a couple of years ago, the Harlan Neighborhood Association Executive Board, I believe it was, opposed putting any of the rest stops within their ward where there's residential area. I tried to get ahold of her this morning. She has not returned my call. So I, I don't know what their, their position is on that at this point. That was their position then. I also went and looked at that area and walked the field, and it's an unimproved park. Relaxing the rules a little bit is an understatement on this. It's surrounded by residential. Right across the street is a assisted living for Alzheimer's patients. I talked to the administrator there. They're already having problems with an illegal camp behind their property. That is, their facility is secure as far as keeping the clients in. However, they're having problems with these illegal campers right now. Climbing over the fence, knocking on doors and windows in the middle of the night, and all the garbage and graffiti and everything that goes with it. You've got apartments all the way around it. Immediately to the east, there's an apartment complex, I'm sorry, the west, that has balconies and patios that overlook this park. And there's, unless you build a, Donald Trump says, unless you build a wall, they're going to be viewing this, this facility. Just to the west of that is a bar. So I'm a little concerned about the close proximity of this area to an illegal camp, to a bar, and to all the residential area in there. I, I wasn't able to speak to the homeowner in that one house. And then just the other side of the blue line on the diagram, I think you described it as, was it that a Dry Creek or Wetlands area? What is it again?
It's, it's a, it's a, it's a drainage feat. I mean, there's water in there.
Okay. Yeah, just the other side of that, there's a huge apartment complex with subsidized housing in there, too, which, I mean, there's a lot of people in that area. The bus route, according to the administrator, that shows stopping right in front, only runs during the, the U of O school year. Otherwise, the closest bus stops are either on MLK Boulevard or Harlow Road. So it's going to make it a little difficult during the non-school year to get to it. The footprint, my understanding is, is 8,000 square feet?
Roughly.
Okay, all right. One of the other points is, there's no shopping anywhere near that facility. You'd have to go up over the freeway into Springfield or go all the way to Coburg Road. I will say that, you know, I explained to the administrator the, the philosophy of the, the rest stops, and that it's not run like the illegal camping, that it is monitored, it is, you know, enclosed and everything. She was not either in favor or opposed. She just raised some concerns about the interaction of the people in, that would be in that rest stop with the illegal campers, with the college-age crowd that lives immediately to the west, as well as the bar right there. And her major concern was the Alzheimer's patients and how they would respond to this. It's a little bit more than some of them could probably comprehend and process.
Claire?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the conversation and the discussion around these sites. I also really appreciate staff doing this work on these sites. And as George Brown pointed out, you know, at 8,000 square feet, it seems like the sites will take up a tiny portion of any one of them. I do appreciate the concerns that Counselor Polling just raised about that particular site. But I just want to remind us again, you know, the first rest stop we authorized on Roosevelt is located on a very small lot. It, it takes up the whole lot, pretty much, and is kitty-corner to a St. Vincent de Paul managed mobile home park. I have to say, I've received zero complaints about that rest stop from the adjacent businesses or the residents in the two-plus years that they've been there. So it's a well-managed program that has very little impact. But I, I do think that the discussion we're having is good and important in terms of the considerations. So, you know, I think both the Amazon site and the Lone Oak site, even though, excuse me, the, yeah, the Lone Oak site, even though technically in Ward 7, are both good considerations. The Lone Oak site has the advantage of being near the Fred Meyer grocery store. So, you know, people could get the, their needs met there pretty easily. But I think either of these sites would be good places to cite, move to Nightingale Rest Stop.
Chris?
Thank you. I was just trying to do some quick calculations. That 8,000 square feet is about 18% of an acre. So it's less than 20% of an acre. So it's a pretty small...
Yeah, to give you some scale, I think this, we base that on the Roosevelt, Garfield rest stop is about, I think it's like 65 by 150 feet.
Okay, okay. So on any one of these, it would be a fairly small part, and you could situate it. So it'd be as far away from things as you could. The thing about rest stops are, that's most appealing to me and makes them, makes them desirable, is that they are, first, they're authorized. We've approved them, and there are rules that operate under them. Everybody that's in them has been vetted to some degree or another. You know, not just anybody can come in. And that they're also supervised. There's somebody there. And I think that makes an enormous difference from illegal rest, illegal camps, which I am definitely not supportive of illegal camps. And this is an entirely different animal because they are authorized, supervised, and the members that are there are vetted. Plus, they take up a relatively small amount of space. And so for that reason, I've been supportive of the entire rest stop program. I think it is a great program. But we are definitely stuck with a shortage of locations to put them. And so I think if, if the primary relaxation of the rules you're talking about is to be able to consider undeveloped park space, is that really primarily the relaxation you're looking for?
That's true in all three of these instant, in all three of these properties.
Is there any other relaxation that you're looking for other than undeveloped park property? Not really? Okay. Because I'm willing to consider, because it's in my ward... Because I'm willing to consider, because it's in my ward, so I'm taking this responsibility on. The Amazon Corridor section, I've walked that area many, many times, I know what that piece of property looks like, and I know how close it is to the apartments there. If you put it all the way over near Janus Street, that's a pretty kind of industrial-looking area, and you could put it close to there, and I don't think it would really represent a problem. Particularly if it's only less than 20% of one acre, it's a pretty small piece of property, particularly if you fence it and you supervise it and you manage it. I think it could actually work there. I think it's far enough away from the apartments that it would not create a significant imposition on them. They could maybe see it, but I think it would be far enough away that it would be okay. And if they can see it, they can also see the industrial property on the other side, which is not particularly attractive either, so it's not like it's going to be a visual pollution situation for them. So I would be willing to support using that site in order to deal with the immediate issue we have with people who need to get off of the county property. And I recognize it is, it's unfortunate that they have to move, and I understand the reasons why, but these are human beings, and we need to find a place for them. And so I would be willing to advocate for that location over the others if it seemed like it was going to be the path of least resistance.
Just a couple of comments, and then we need to wrap up and at least give you direction here. I just wanted to say that we, a lot of conversations, this goes back to Mike's comment way back, there have been a lot of internal discussions, such as you talked about, Mike, with the county over trying to resolve this issue, lots of conversations about property and all of that. And probably, if you want something like that to go to a different level, a joint-elected official meeting on it would probably help, because otherwise, there's, everybody's kind of stuck with the current directions they have from their elected bodies. So that's just my comment on that one. And I did want you to know that the South Eugene neighbors have been meeting, and Heather Zlik, he's been a trooper on this one, and they are really looking hard for locating rest stops in that south area. And they, you know, there's a, I don't know what they'll end up with, but they, it's a journey they're on to try to figure out how they can contribute to what we can have happen in our city. So Mike, you're next, and then we're gonna...
I think I got it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I just heard about this, this evening when walking in, so I'm not sure that, without checking in with anybody in Santa Clara, as this one site is very, very near to some folks in my ward, I haven't had a chance, as George mentioned, to check in with anybody on that and see their thoughts or if they have any concerns, having just received it when I got into the door. But I would support the idea of the one, I suppose, in Chris's ward, knowing that area and having said the things I did. There's a part of this conversation, though, that concerns me, and it's that when we say that this program is working, I think we should be more careful than that, because it's, it's not causing conflicts with neighbors, that's true. But it's not working to solve the problem. We have about, we have, I'm going to need somebody on Human Services to give me a better idea of the number of beds available for homeless people in our community. If you combine the mission shelter care, every place is at 1,000, I don't know what the number is. We have easily 3,000 a night as the problem to solve. So even if you're generous and say that that's a thousand, somewhere between 1,000 and 2,000 people that in order to do enforcement appropriately in our community of illegal camping, we need to have places for those folks to go. So while we're creating ones and twos of camps here and there, we're not actually solving the problem, because we can't do enforcement while those, while appropriate places don't exist. And in order to actually solve it in that manner, at 20 people for camp, you're talking about quite a lot of camps, and I don't think we have the space. So while, you know, I would support the one in Southwest Eugene tonight, I really encourage us to look at a different approach for this than we are of saying that we're overly successful at this effort. Thank you.
Greg, you want to put a motion on the table?
Sure. I move to authorize, one, the city manager to locate a rest stop for the NHS at either the Lone Oak or Amazon Corridor properties, with the final choice left to the city manager after further investigation, and two, up to $2,000 for the rest stop.
Moved in second. Did you want to say something, Alan?
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what Mike said. I agree with what you said, to borrow what Bill McKibben said about solving climate change, there's no silver bullet for this, it's silver buckshot. And what we're trying to do is have a whole bunch of arrows in our quiver to be able to attack this problem. This is one of, it's, we're not going to solve the problem by having a whole bunch of rest stops or Opportunity Villages around, but it will help, and we should do as much as we possibly can, and to the extent that we can. And I don't think we're near, anywhere near either, maxing out either of those two opportunities.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six. Claire?
I vote yes.
Seven, in opposition, one.
May I state clearly, it's because of the location of that one, so that it's not misconstrued again yet in the future, that somehow I voted against this.
It passes. Thank you all, and we'll be back at 7:30.